Okay. Sean, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay. At this time, we would like to call the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to order. If you're here for the Planning Commission now, it will meet immediately after this meeting. So we'll do the zoning first. We'd like to welcome each one of you here. First item of business will be the minutes of the December 2nd meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
I make a motion to approve the minutes that was presented.
Second.
Motion on the second, no more discussion. There being none, we call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. The next item of business, we'll move into a special exception, and this is on Martin Street. It's for a two-apartment building. Don, are you here to present this?
Just, yeah, I'm here. I'm just here for the polls.
Okay. Frank, you want to present that to us, please?
Yeah. Good morning. Thank you very much for having me today. I'm Joey. I'm with Loda Cooper Companies.
Okay.
We're a workforce housing development company out of Columbus, Ohio. I'm based out of Jacksonville, Florida. Today, I'm here to request a special exemption on the Martin Street property. We plan to build 50 units of workforce housing, 12 one- and three-bedrooms, and 26 two-bedrooms. What questions do you all have? I think the site plan is available to you, and I have copies here if you'd like to see it as well.
So when you're saying workforce housing, what exactly do you mean by workforce housing?
Workforce housing serves folks earning 50 to 60% of Warren County area median income.
Okay.
We work with Tennessee Housing Development Agency to finance the property. We also have properties nearby in Smithville and, pardon me, no, Crossville and, yes, Smithville. Northside Park Apartments in Smithville is probably, and Crossville is a better example of what we do here as it's new construction.
Is that for this round of THDA credits?
That is correct. The round, the applications are due April 15th. I think it's really important to stress that we have our own management arm. So we're long-term property owners. We own and operate. We really don't sell. We actually acquire a lot of properties as well and rehabilitate them. Tennessee does a really good job of making rehabilitation credits available. So, you know, our properties are maintained. We have the extended use of the affordability period is, it's really good in the state.
If this special exception is approved, what does the timeline look like for a development like this coming to fruition?
Great question. So THDA typically takes three to five months to give us a thumbs up or thumbs down. And there's often a question and cure period. So likely, once we receive an award of housing credits, it takes us about, you know, nine to 12 months to get building permits entitled and then begin construction. So, you know, and then our construction team quotes probably 14 to 15 months to complete the project. So, golly, I guess, yes, if we get the award at the end of this year, you know, probably, probably nine months to get entitled, and then a year from there. So likely, it's 2025 now. Your replacement service date would likely be in 2027.
Okay, okay. And so does that application for TH, for your THDA credits, does that hinge on this special exception of getting passed?
Yes, we would need the special exception. We would have to prove zoning to Tennessee Housing upon application, yes.
Okay.
Sean, is all that property zoned the same?
It's all zoned C2, yes.
Do you have any more questions on this? Sean, you want to comment on this before we open up?
The parcel size is 3.5 acres. It's adequate enough. Parking will, that proposal on the site plan meets all the minimum requirements. It consists of the two buildings. Water is the area, is a six-inch line sewer, is eight-inch. We've been working with water and sewer to get the plans there. All the requirements from 14-507-3A are met, as well as 14-708.2D, what the proposal has got to do with.
Are there any in the audience here that would like to comment on this?
I'd like to.
Okay. Come forward and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Tim Nichol, Timothy Nichol. I am the owner and full-time resident of 116 Garfield. Something Sean just said concerns me greatly because the city has a habit of not hiring. I'm not a civil engineer, so I'm not promoting myself here, has a terrible record of not hiring a civil engineer before they look at water remediation. And when we get heavy rainfall, well, like the five inches we got in six hours back in May, and the eight inches we got in February of 2022, that, that water fills up, overflows in the street, even with the new curbs, wasn't even enough drainage for the rain we had last week. But that water in that field, for the most part stays in that field. I had city workers telling me it does spill into my yard. If that's all concrete and Building A is built right up against the back of all those five homes, so it'll be concrete right up to the border, right up to that tree line. And that's the other question, what are you planning to do about that tree line that separates the properties? Where is all that water going to go? Because I don't want it in my crawl space and sell it. Deeply concerned about that.
As, as Lyndon looked at this, and Lyndon's in the base review, and that'll all have to be approved prior to any application for it.
And Lyndon was the one I talked to when they reviewed the sidewalks and the storm drains. And storm drains, the new ones, they can't handle the water. The old ones couldn't handle it because they didn't get, I did a good job back to February of 2022 of constantly contacting the city every time we got heavy rains or heavy rains were coming to make sure those drains were cleared out. Got a bad back, I can't take out those heavy metal grades myself.
Well, these items.
But now with the six-inch curve, they said it would be better. But the second drain that's in front of my house, is only three inches deep, where it used to be two feet deep. And when I asked about when you had your civil engineer do the work, I was told, oh, we didn't hire a civil engineer to do the work. Because I asked a simple question. On the margin of the civil engineers' workup for this, what was the total water capacity that could be mediated? That's when he told me they didn't hire a civil engineer. Nice young man who headed the project, but made no sense when I said, well, you need to put another storm drain slightly up this hill. He said, we only have eight inches. And I said, what do you mean you only have eight inches? It's uphill. You've had, if it's only eight inches, you've got eight inches the whole way because it's going uphill. So I, I have some real concerns about the water. This is a 120-year-old home. The one next to me that's currently vacant, just sold, 120-year-old home.
No, it sounds like you have some valid concerns about the water retention and.
Absolutely. You concrete that whole field, and you put the building right up it, where's that water going to go?
Right. So our, our role as this board is to, is to look at the special exceptions as they pertain to zoning. But I know that Sean and Lyndon himself at the city here do an excellent job with the storm water mitigation, and they've mapped the entire city. They're, they're constantly working on that. And so the, the role of our board here does not really have a.
I also did an excellent job of responding to the water remediation. But for what's been done to deal with the water remediation, the problem is I'm still having to call. And now you're creating not another problem for me, a problem that's 10 times worse. In February of 2022, the house at 114 Garfield now has a sump pump. Port Michelle now lives in Alabama. That's why the house is vacant. But they had six feet of water under there. I lost my dehumidifier because there was so much water down there. And my dehumidifier sits four feet above the concrete down there. And I won't blame the city for my sump pump line breaking in May, which caused me another one, but that's because my sump pump line broke.
I think these are items that will be addressed when they submit their plans for, to get their permit. Our concern today is, does it meet the special exception for the zoning?
Why did you guys send letters to me?
Well, as a matter, yeah, it's a matter of.
My concern from a special zoning standpoint, I don't want people looking in my backyard. I don't want people looking at me when I'm in my mudroom. You put a two-story building literally on the property line. And nowhere and anything in here, which you guys should look at, does it talk about the water remediation from a zoning standpoint? Does it talk about the trees that are going between the two? Are those going to go away?
Well, those, the, the water retention.
I'm not even getting started on noise ordinance.
Right. And that will all come in.
So I'll take another day off to come here.
Yeah. It's, we're, we're pretty bound by the scope of what our board can, can weigh in on for special exceptions like this.
So none of what I've said is even in consideration for what you guys are.
Well, you, you've got Sean sitting here. He's, he's taking notes on all this. And it will be addressed when they submit their plans. So you came forward to present it. He's aware of the concerns, and that will be addressed before the plan's approved.
Right.
Then a final consideration, does McMinnville need this? It's about 15%, my understanding, of apartment vacancies currently in McMinnville? And, and now you're bringing in another 50-unit complex. Martin Street, fortunately, the entrance isn't on Garfield, but Martin Street can't handle that traffic. And Sean, I just want to say, I, it will take a lot to convince me that you guys are going to do something about decent water remediation on there. Now, I know you wouldn't do a French drain for a building that big, but between the two properties, there should be a drain system that prevents any water from that lot from getting on to my lot, 114, 106, 108. Like, two of those houses are currently vacant. There's a reason they're vacant.
As part of the process, once we get building application before we get, and the project starts, it'll have to be designed, and that will go under review.
And a civil engineer is going to look at it.
So that goes to, and then we'll look at it from a stormwater standpoint.
Lyndon's not a civil engineer.
That's our process.
But Lyndon's not a civil engineer. He doesn't specialize in that. You have civil engineers that specialize in traffic, construction, remediation, just like this one. And you guys aren't going to send it to them? You're not going to, you don't have a civil engineer on retainer?
We do not.
I think that opens you guys all up to lawsuit.
But we do appreciate you coming and pointing this out, and it will be a consideration before the. Permit is issued.
So the permit's going to be issued?
It don't.
You just, you just said it as in the affirmative.
Well, our board does not weigh in on that, though.
That's, that's a better statement.
Our board does not weigh in on the permitting or anything passed, you know, the zoning that is governed.
So C2 needs, it's for single-family homes, right? Was that commercial?
C2 is, is in a commercial.
It's general commercial.
Use permitted for appeal, which is a special exception.
Right.
Okay. Put you guys on board? What was the name of that company?
We're companies, Inc. Here's my, my card.
Okay. Never retained an attorney in my life, except when I adopted my son. I find out that water's getting into my property.
You will. I, I can assure you, we're, we're planning to have underground storage and pension. I'm not a civil engineer, so I can't, I can't speak on it more than that, but.
You've seen this plan, right? Okay? I'm slightly fortunate because my house is right here. So this building, all this, and this tree line, doesn't care whatever you guys are going to do about it. I can't fix it. And I know you guys get ran in Ohio, but when we get 30, we get eight inches in 36 hours, which is not on you guys.
Well, I'd like to thank, thank you, Mr. Nichols.
There's no drainage system listed on this to separate the water from us.
I promise you, we will have a civil engineer design the underground revenge storage. I'm not one, so I can't provide the answer today.
By the way, my brother's a civil engineer. So when you get plans, you retire. When you get plans, can I see it so I can send it to him so he can tell me whether or not it's going to be allowed?
I don't have permission to grant that right now, but I could, I could ask permission to.
But it will be part, but he'll have to submit it to the city under Freedom of Information Act. I can get that.
Thank you for being here. Does anyone else here want to address this on Martin Street? This is your opportunity to comment. Sean, do you want to comment any maybe for clarification on this?
Well, we're at the base, that the storm water will all be addressed as we're moving forward. Lyndon will be looking at that. I don't know what issues are in that area, what has been, what's been fixed, what's been not. I would gladly bring that up with Frank and Lyndon to see if there's anything else we can do. But as far as the risk we're taking with project, they will have to meet the requirements and make sure that some water is taken care of.
Thank you very much.
Board members have any more questions?
No. I make a motion to approve the special exception not to exceed 50 dwelling units contained within two buildings. As per staff recommendations, all the zoning requirements for this use of appeal have been satisfied.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any more discussion? There being none, we call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move into the next item of business, and this is a special exception on Needmore Road for five units. Is someone here to present that, please?
Good morning. My name is Nathan Nelson. I'm with St. John Engineering. We're the civil engineer on the project, and so we are just proposing, I assume you'll have a site plan in front of you. And so all we're talking about today is the parcel that fronts, or is on the corner of Needmore and Pike Hill. And so we are just asking for a special exception to put five townhome units on that parcel, on that corner. The, the other side that you may see there is owned by the same person and will be developed as a separate site. But, so that's what we're asking for today, is just that five townhome units in C2 that's fronting the.
Sean, this probably will meet everything that is for us. Do we have any questions?
This one is as part of the overall, it's like a drainage pond.
Yes, now they will have a combined drainage pond at that, and when it, when it is constructed, whether the townhomes come first or say, because right now, we're looking at doing a gas station off that front Smithville Highway on that corner. So whichever comes first, you know, the detention pond will be used for both properties to maintain the stormwater.
The board members have any questions or comments?
What is your timeline on this if this is approved?
We are still in design, so we still have to work with architects on making sure that the five units, you know, what, what we're proposing here, the sizes does fit and meets the zoning for R3 and this area. So that's what kind of the framework we're working on, but not really a set-in-stone timeframe of when, say, the townhomes get constructed or say the gas station gets constructed. We're going to try to get something designed and hopefully approved this, sorry, around this summer. That's, you know, taken before the city, but actual construction, that's going to be up to the owner, so.
Does anyone in the audience to comment on this?
So you on the property that joins Smithville Road also?
My, my client does.
Okay, yeah. So it's two separate properties.
Yes, it is. It is two separate properties, and.
This is where the townhomes will be.
This is where Teddy Allen.
This is where the gas station is.
Got you.
And so what we're showing is a lot line that you may see on the, on the plan. There will have to be a lot line shift because currently the, the size and arrangement of the property lines will have to make adjustments, which we'll make up.
I think it's good, you know, both properties, and you can work to during each and everything.
Yeah.
Is that property line shift going to affect any of the setbacks or?
No, because it will, will affect setbacks. It'll give a little more weight to meet that, but it won't change the size or anything that would affect it.
Yeah, so right now, it's really the use. And then so if we get the, if y'all do approve the use, then that way we can go forward and do the lot line adjustment.
It's going to be more kind of straightened out to.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the special exception.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion on the second. Any more discussion? There being none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Thank you for being here. Okay. Sean, do we have anything else to tell before the board is zoning? Nothing. At this time, we will open up the Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second. Okay. I guess we better adjourn first, huh?
We have a lot of rules.
I know. I can't read.
Who did they have to make these for?
I lost my glasses.
You're stepping this one too?
Yeah, I mean, I, I might, it's, sometimes it's.
I didn't know I could see as bad as I can see.
Okay, we are adjourned. We will move into the Planning Commission meeting.
I don't want to be named.
Try it.
But why not? But why?
Can I get a.
Jerry, at some point, I'll have a comment I'd like to make here.
Okay. Okay. We'll call the Planning Commission meeting to order at this time. First item will be the minutes of the December 3rd meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
I make a motion to approve the minutes that's presented in.
Second.
Just Mr. Green. Okay, we have a motion on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. We'll move in then to the next. It's a, for a three-lot subdivision. This is located between. This is located between Fairgrounds Road and Northwood Lane. Is someone here to present this, please? Okay.
Hello?
Say your name for the record, please.
Yvonne Morales. I'm going to represent Yvonne Morales, who owns the property. And he is just asking to subdivide the three lots into six, twelve, twelve units. Because what he gave me, I'm sorry, I'm not ready to hear.
Well, you're doing fine. We've got a copy of that, so thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions on this? Seems like it meets everything. Sean, about the sewer for that one lot, is, is that going to be a problem or?
No, it won't be a problem. It's just the manhole is down here, kind of fairground lane, and so we just need to make sure that the design for just that one vacuum line, get that from there. Outside of that, everything else that we, there's no issue with the sewer along the two Northwood Lot Lanes, so it's just that we're going to have to have a little bit of the size, so that's why it'll be a preliminary plant approval, and then we'll get that design approved and then we can move on to the file.
Anyone have any questions on? I'm sure you're looking at the plan there. Those are good-sized lots, so. Anyone in the audience? I guess not. Okay, do we have a motion on this?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on second. Any more discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now this will go to the planning commission, correct? I mean, to the board and alderman for?
No, not for, not for plan.
You don't have to do the plan, okay.
So once we get that design on that sewer for that one lot, then we'll have to come in for the final plant approval of that.
Okay.
Once that's all this straightened out, so.
Well, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you all, thank you so much.
Jerry had a comment.
Okay, okay.
This is in light of our, I guess, in the minutes we approved last week, or last month, the parent group's proposal to change the zoning from R one to R six, you, and then that went forward, you know, to the board of aldermen. But is there, you, is there a request that our group can, our board could make to ensure that the board of aldermen looks at the same thing that we look at? Because we were unanimous in approving that, and then the board of aldermen was unanimous in denying that. And, you, I just, it's, I was just kind of to kind of clarify and not waste folks' time either, though, because those guys came here, they had all their, you, they, this board, and it was essentially a waste of their time, you, to go through us. And so just, you know, can we clarify what?
Normally, our alderman, and since she wasn't able to be at that meeting, I don't think, so that kind of threw a reach in. Usually it works different because you're represented, but with your alderman, you know, you know what went on here. You can still vote however you want to, as an alderman, of course, but it, it might have some bearing on discussion, which this time we probably didn't get that.
Was Ryle here?
Ryle's here.
He, I mean, he spoke on y'all's behalf at the meeting. I don't know if you read the minutes or watched the.
I did.
Production, what?
I, I did.
You did, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, like you, I was a little concerned too that the way it went, but it's, when it leaves here, it's now of our control.
But just to, you, like, so you have the contractors come here and, you, it's, you know, a lot of steps, and if, and if it's not going to happen, if it just, you know, essentially wastes folks' time, you know, that's.
Unfortunately.
With the state statute on rezoning, it has to come before this board as planning commission to make a recommendation to the board of aldermen, mayor and aldermen, and then they are the ultimate decision maker on that, whether approving or disapproving that. So there's, there's no way not to, it has to come in front of this board. It can't go just directly to the board of, of mayor and aldermen.
But it seemed, seemed like a good compromise to me.
Yeah, and, and the minutes from this meeting and all the stuff that was discussed goes into the staff report for the board.
Okay. I, I guess my request to the board of aldermen from this group is, I consider, you, that, this group has looked at it in detail, and, you know, give that some weight versus, you, in, in the, in the minutes, it didn't appear that there was much weight given to, you, the folks on those boards.
And, and I think.
Opinion.
I don't remember that happening a whole lot before, do you, Jim? Being that unified in it, you might get a split vote or something. Oh, I do know people react to, I mean, I've been turned down before because there's a big crowd there, and it does get, in fact, I've sat and waited until some of them left for and went outside. I mean, you know, because people do act, react to the crowd, I mean, somewhat, you know, I don't know, but I, I agree with you. We couldn't just be wasting our time if they don't even consider, but I think that's a rare occurrence that it happened to that extreme. And, of course, we want everybody to vote, you know, how they feel. I mean, that was the recommendation from this board, but still, if they felt different, then that's their obligation to vote also.
And, and my main reason we're bringing it up is we want to be encouraging for folks to spend their money in our, in our town. And when, if, whether it's this board or the mayor board of aldermen that, you know, puts on a face of, you know, there's, you know, a no-growth attitude, then that pushes folks away and.
But Sean can just do so much, I mean, you know, you can't, you can't twist arms. I mean, you know, he can, he can present the facts and, and then, but it, and I appreciate you.
That's wonderful. I, I was, you know, just frustrated by that, I was like.
Yeah, and I can understand that because, you know, if, if it helped every time, then we just, we probably just quit and we wouldn't even come up here. But it, it is totally rare for that to happen. And, you know, I, I don't know. I think the crowd might have, you know, who knows?
And, and so with that, you, like, maybe you, your folks from this board should show up to those, you know, those contentious meetings to be like.
Yeah, you could, you could, you're very, well, they asked me after the meeting if I was going to be there, I said, no way. But I didn't, I didn't anticipate a great big problem because I thought it was a, a good compromise on where we were at before, but.
Right.
I like to see building going on too, so, you know, I could be a little lenient, so. Anyway.
Thank you.
This next one, Sean, on this Rosewood property, on our map, it's showing Cadillac Lane instead of Rosewood, so we didn't have much to go on.
We don't have a representative here for this one? I don't know if you want to page one?
Well, you know, we did one on Rosewood not long ago.
Yeah, this is right across the street.
Okay. Well, I've got a question while we're on that, if, if I can, on the lot size requirements in R six, the side yard, I thought we changed that to fifteen.
Yeah, I might not have been reflect on that, it is fifteen. That one through.
Well, it's printed here as ten.
Yeah, it is fifteen.
So I thought we better not let that information.
No, no, you are correct, it was fifteen.
Okay.
That was just pulled off on the one that had the ten, not the fifteen on there, so.
Okay. Okay, well.
I just wonder if we should put this off the next time, because I don't like to do something to the person that requests it's not here, they ain't got enough interest in to come. I don't think we should do, do it, because, as I say, put it out, like, show up.
I, I agree. That way we can have questions to the actual owner if, if that's an option.
So are we just going to?
We'll just take what to the next one.
Okay, just table the next one, okay. Do we have a motion to table this request?
So move.
A motion and a second.
I have a second, yeah, I'll be the second.
Okay, any more discussion? There being none, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Okay. Do you have any updates?
I don't have any at this point.
We've already been updated, haven't we? Anything else then? Anybody? Appreciate everyone being here, your patience. Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks again.
Thank you.